All right, thank you all for being here today for our county commission meeting. Hopefully, uh, one, two, three, that's four of us, is that enough, Madam County Attorney? All right. Did y'all see Commissioner Proctor back there, or Commissioner O'Keefe?
I think Commissioner Proctor's back there.
Yeah.
I think he is.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started, we'd like to observe a moment of silence, if you wouldn't mind, for the loss, I believe it was yesterday, of former Commissioner Jay Lee Voss, who I never had the pleasure of meeting, and some of our other commissioners probably have. Commissioner Voss served Leon County for a long time, 20 years. Mr. County Administrator, were you?
Nineteen...
Ninety-two?
Nineteen seventy-two to nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, so y'all overlapped a little bit?
A little bit.
Yeah, so, um, we are sad enough to the loss of Commissioner Voss. He served for a long time, our county and our community, and we'd just like to take a second, thank you Commissioner Proctor for your suggestion, just a little quick moment of silence, thank you. All right, thank you Commissioners, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the Voss family. Thank you for lending Commissioner Voss to this community for such a long time. Um, all right Commissioners, we're getting to our agenda. I believe we, let's see, Commissioner Cummings, would you like to introduce our invocation?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have the pleasure, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, of introducing Reverend Ronnie Cannon. He's an Associate Pastor of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, and if he will come to the podium, he will be providing the invocation for today's meeting. So Reverend Cannon.
Heavenly Father, as we gather today as servants of this community, we come before you with grateful hearts. We thank you for the opportunity to lead and to serve our fellow citizens. Grant us wisdom and discernment as we make decisions that affect the lives of those we represent. Illuminate our minds with your truth and guide our decisions with patience and compassion. Help us to listen to one another, valuing diverse perspectives while striving for unity in our purpose. May our actions reflect the best interests of our community, fostering justice, peace, and prosperity for all. Bless each member here with strength and resilience, and inspire us to work together for greater good. It's in Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen, thank you.
Thank you Reverend Cannon.
Thank you so much for that appropriate prayer. Now if we will all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner Cummings. Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for Commissioner Caban to participate via the telephone. So move, Mr. Chair. All right, we've got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye, and it is approved unanimously. Commissioner Caban, are you on the phone?
Yes, sir, I can hear you, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, glad you could join us. We are now on to awards and presentations. Our first proclamation is going to be, uh, presented by Commissioner Maddox. Please join him at the podium, Bishop Devon Griffin Senior of the Family Worship and Praise Center.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have the honor and privilege of presenting this proclamation to not only the community leader, but my spiritual leader, and I appreciate all you've done for our community, but me personally, I appreciate everything you've done for me. Kind words and times I needed means a lot, so I appreciate that. Mr. Chair, the proclamation reads, whereas Quincy Devon Griffin, born in historic city of Charleston, South Carolina, has walked a path shaped by purpose, compassion, and unwavering faith. From his early days as a student at Florida A&amp;M University, where he earned a degree in music education in 2003, to his role as the Director of Bands at James S. Rickards High School, he has sown seeds of excellence in the lives of young people, shaping minds and inspiring futures through music and mentorship. And whereas, after a decade of faithful service in a classroom and in the church, Quincy D. Griffin stepped into the divine assignment in 2013, answering the call to leave Family Worship and Praise Center, following the passing of his founder and the beloved pastor Cyrus Flanagan. As executive pastor turned senior shepherd, he embraced this mantle with humility and strength, continuing to continue a ministry built on love, restoration, and spiritual, spirit-filled transformation. I'm sorry, can I have School Board Member Jones come up? He is head steward in church extraordinarily in Leon County. It would be an honor to have him come up and present this with me, I appreciate it. Whereas, recognizing the visible disparities in his community, especially among children attending Southside Title I Schools, in 2017, he launched Schools for Shoe, uh, Shoes for School, a ministry born of compassion and driven by dignity that has given over 26,000 pairs of shoes to students in Tallahassee and beyond. Again, fitting that we would have a school board member here, is we've all gone through that first day of school, having to have those shoes that you wanted, for me it was British Knights back in the day. Yeah, I never got a pair, my mom would buy them. Whereas Pastor Quincy D. Griffin Senior is the founding father, creator, producer, and visionary of Leon County's annual Jubilee Gospel Music Festival, bringing in A-list artists to the Attali Amphitheater and establishing the Jubilee Gospel Music Choice Awards, annually recognizing legendary gospel talent in Leon County, which has never been recognized before. And whereas Pastor Quincy D. Griffin Senior is the founding, well, I just read that, whereas under Pastor Quincy D. Griffin's bold and spirit-led leadership, Family Worship and Praise has become more than a place of worship, it is a movement of empowerment through sound doctrine, authentic worship, and passion of outreach, and for outreach. Whereas, on April 12, 2025, Pastor Quincy Griffin Senior was peacefully, prayfully, not peacefully, prayfully, well, it was peaceful, elated and consecrated as the presiding prelit of Family Worship and Praise Center Church worldwide, and now walks in his divine calling as Bishop Quincy D. Griffin Senior, expanding his reach and deepening his impact across the globe, and continuing to sow seeds of excellence, but now in new churches. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Leon County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize and honor Bishop Quincy D. Griffin Senior for the elevation of the office of Bishop, and for the extraordinary vision to engage, equip, and empower generations of believers ushering in transformation that reaches beyond the walls of the church and into the fabric of the community. This is signed by the Chair, as well as the rest of the commission, tested by County Administrator. Congratulations.
First I'd like to thank God, who's the head of my life, but also want to thank all of the Commissioners who are here, those who continue to serve the great work that is to be done in Tallahassee, Florida, with myself. Last year, Leon County Board of Commissioners got on board to be a partner with us, and I believe Carolyn Cummings, you made that decision, we have to support Shoes for School, and I'm telling you, last year we were able to give 7,000 shoes to the kids in Leon County and surrounding areas. I thank you all, I believe I've worked with most of you personally, but I can't wait to see the great work that we'll continue to do. I do not do this by myself. Behind me is not only the wind beneath my wings, but she's the beauty on the face of my children. This is Lady Michelle Griffin, can y'all just give her a hand? She's a dynamic force to be reckoned with, and I'm thankful that she serves along with me. And I have to give props to my co-laborers, my ministers, my elders, some of my leaders at Family Worship and Praise Center who joined me today. Can y'all just stand and be recognized too? I could not do it without you all, and I will not. My children could not come, today was field day and testing, so this was a non-negotiable for them, but we'll see them in the near future. Again, thank you so much, I love Tallahassee, and I think it's wonderful to be able to serve in a city that I love, and serve also the people I love as well. Thank you so much, I'll see you all soon. Bill Proctor, I'll see you tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Pastor Griffin did not tell you that two Sundays ago, at his church, they sponsored what was called the Be Out Sunday? Those of you who've gone to Florida A&amp;M University know what Be Out Day is, Be Out Saturday. But they had more folk who was there being out of church than probably most of the other churches had, combined with people who was being in church. What came with Be Out Sunday was, was hot dogs, hamburgers, fun, and them kids pull on the rope so hard, the rope broke, and the rope didn't just break twice, then they brought out rope number two, the blue rope, and they played so hard, and the rope broke twice, I mean, right in the middle, and there was another collision, boom, boom, boom. And the kind of energies that festers around this church is spectacular, unique, and a very special house of praise. And these words conveyed today do not capture the impact that this church is having on the community and the life of Southside and all across. Now, I'm gonna tell y'all now, I was disappointed that by the time I got to the shoe giveaway that my size was gone. I'm gonna let y'all know early what my feet, this year, because I ain't gonna, I voted for Commissioner Cummings, I supported you, but if they ain't got my size after this year, I give out 7,000 shoes and I ain't get none. But we love all the great work you're doing, and we love Bishop Quincy and Mother Michelle. And three Saturdays ago, four Saturdays ago, he was installed as the Bishop. It was a wonderful, outstanding service, and I'm just truly excited for the years ahead, and all that this team and this unit will offer to this community. And as a preacher, we have Be Out Sunday at my church over in Greensboro all the time, everybody just be out, they don't even come by. I wasn't trying to hold it every Sunday, but still, everybody just ought to be out. But we love you all, and thank you, look forward, and please know that the good members of Bethel A&amp;M Church, our head deacon, Brother Darrell Jones, our Stuart Proten, will tell you that we're right down the street, and we look forward to working, continuing to work with you into the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cummings, you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just very briefly, we are certainly elated that you're here, Reverend Griffin, you and your church members, your beautiful wife, you just have a positive impact on our community, you love our children, and you put your money where your mouth is. And sitting on this desk, I'm proud that the county commission has supported your efforts last year, will be supporting them this year, and I hope we continue to support your efforts. So just thank you, congratulations to all of you, I see Dr. Bowlen out there, he does a great job in our Southside Schools, and just all of you all for your love and compassion for our children, so thank you very much.
All right, yes, thank you Pastor Griffin, or Bishop Griffin, and I'll say, Commissioner Proctor, if I show up late to the shoes event, they probably still have me, because I wear the same size shoe as a middle schooler. And I did want to shout out a couple of our Leon County Schools leaders out here, Dr. Marcus, oh, not Nicholas, is it? Scott, I'm sorry, Dr. Marcus Scott and Dr. Benny Bolden, thank you guys for being here, along with our School Board Member, Mr. Jones. All right, Commissioner Proctor, you are up next.
Now, I just want to say upfront that the awards that we about to present, proclamations we about to present, some people think that church folk and the moon and other places are not overlapping. I beg to differ. Some people have dual membership.
Scott and Julie Carswell, please join Commissioner Proctor at the podium.
I am very, very honored, and reflecting on the 40-year anniversary of the moon, and the Carswells have been, they're just stalwart members of our community. And a couple of things I'd like to say in terms of the economic impact which their establishment had, they've paid 22, over 40 years, $22 million in payroll and payroll taxes. They've paid $20 million in artist fees. They've paid over $8 million in sales tax, 600,000 in property taxes, and have paid over the life of the moon, 2,400,000 in utilities. They've paid over 14,000 hotel nights for artists, and have donated over 800 day or night events for charity. And who's that saying, yes? They've paid over 2,600,000 to the Tallahassee Police Department for off-duty officers, and have produced over 1,500 national acts. The moon staff and equipment has produced over 60 concerts or events at the Attali Amphitheater over the past 10 years. And then there's some writing right there, I don't know what that, I gotta say right there. Anyway, that part right there, yeah, that part right there. But when you can quantify and measure empirically the contributions of a business establishment to the tune of locating these numbers, I mean that Mr. Scott Carswell had a great helpmate behind him, because we know he ain't kept up with nothing like this right there, Scott didn't do that. So Julie, come on up here, give me a hug for keeping up with Scott, this is awesome. And Scott, we want both of you all to know, for 40 years of holding together your congregants, the skill sets common to holding a church together, making sure the music is right, is the same thing that Mr. Matt and Mr. Carswell got to do. The music got to be right, it got to be right, DJ Dimp's notes got to be right, that's the first thing. There's a lot of overlap, people want to feel good when they go to the church, they want to feel good when they leave. And well, y'all know how they want to feel when they leave the top flight or the moon. And you can make that comparison, and I invite you to do so. But this proclamation, which we share, which does not capture the quantitative, but simply it states, whereas in May of 1984, Scott Carswell purchased the closed AMP grocery store located at 1105 East Lafayette Street, and began funding, design, and development. Less than a year later, Scott opened the Musical Moon on April 24th, 1985. Whereas Scott and Julie married in 1988, and have managed the business as general managers and co-owners, their children Scott Junior and Jack are also involved in the family business by assisting with promotions and event management. And whereas, the moon, Tallahassee's premier variety showcase for entertainment and community events, was designed for event diversity and flexibility, and is truly Tallahassee's community arts center. Whereas in 1984, having a venue switch genre within the same week was unheard of, much less on the same night. The moon has produced various back-to-back events, quickly moving from a private event or a banquet to a country hip-hop jazz, a rock concert, but actually the moon is that place where there's a genre variation. You can have boots on the ground on Friday night, or you can have a boots on the ground on Saturday night or the same night, but they can switch it up. And the moon continues to present all genres of entertainment and community benefits. And whereas the moon has been home to some of Tallahassee's favorite local talents, including Tom and the Cats, the Brothers, what's this big word?
Van Landingham.
Van Landingham, that's exactly what I was gonna try to say. Tallahassee Nights Live. Let's give a shout out for Tallahassee Nights Live, anybody been to Tallahassee Nights Live? All right. Combat Night, Combat Night, the Tallahassee Symphony, the Southern Shakespeare Company, and many more. And whereas the moon has produced many national acts and headliners such as George Clinton, Willie Nelson, Jimmy Buffett, BB King, T-Pain, Tabby Noyd, Derek Trucks, with Susan, what's her name? That's what I was gonna say, Dionne Warwick, Hall &amp; Oates, The Temptations, Bonnie Red, Kendrick Lamar, Kendrick Lamar, and more. And whereas, in addition to diverse programming of events, hundreds of benefits have been hosted at the moon, including fundraisers, galas, and events for worthy causes throughout the region. And whereas Scott and Julie Carswell's 40 years of music production expertise, extensive contacts, and renowned hospitality have been integral to the achievements and success of Leon County's Cascades Concert Series at the Attali Amphitheater for over a decade. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County that we recognize Scott and Julie Carswell for 40 years of contributions and event promotions that have brought cultural life and unity to the community, dated this 13th of May, 20 and 25. And Scott, as I was reading this, we didn't take note of Tyrone Davis, Tyrone Davis, that was a great show, yes, sir. So we present to you all, this proclamation invite your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I think I second what the Bishop said about having my back here with Julie, she's been the rock of the moon for our 40 years, where we started it there, and my two sons here, Scott Junior back here, and Jack. Thank you all for being a part of it from day one, and making it a family affair. And more than the music, I think, or the anything, is the building has just got its own feeling about it, it was built the right way by association with my cousin Laurie Dozier. Mad Dog's first commercial project was the moon, went on to become a little bit bigger. And thanks to Laurie, thanks to so many people that helped start it, from the Voices of the Moon, Joe Bullard, John Summers, who aren't here, DJ Dimp is here, Vaughn Wilson is here, Doc over here with T&amp;L, we've had so much fun with that, and so many people have gone on from T&amp;L to be major stars. It didn't happen for me, although I was in the band, I'm still waiting for that call from Doc, but anyway, moving along, it really has been a love for our community, is what's made this thing continue, and the strength of our city and county, and the whole North Florida, South Georgia has benefited from this building, and that's what drives my wife and I, our family. And I want to thank y'all for awarding us this today. Thank you, Nick.
Commissioner Minor, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Scott and Julie, I just want to thank you for everything that you all do, I mean, not only do you bring incredible concerts, and you name it, like, as Commissioner Proctor said, back-to-back events. It's incredible what you all do to have an event in the afternoon, switch it over, do something in the evening, and to just continue on, it's really incredible. The moon is actually a very important part of this community, for the arts, but also for a host of other things too. And you've hosted, you know, all different types of organizations, to help them communicate with the rest of the community, and we're very grateful for that. It also has a very special place for me because of the daddy-daughter dances that you all host every year. You know, it's really incredible that my girls start small, going to the moon, trying to dance, and they get taller and taller every year, and so it's got a special place in our family's growth and history. So thank you for everything you two do, really appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner Cummings, were you in the queue? Okay, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott, man, from the time I set foot in Tallahassee in 1999 as a recruit at Florida State, until today, the moon has been influential in my life. When I came here as an 18-year-old, obviously it was Saturday nights after the game, my first stop after the game was the moon, with Travis Minor and those guys, I'm telling on them right now, but it's okay, they're all older. Until now, we're actually get the opportunity to go to not only just parties, but civic events right there at your place, and so I want to say we appreciate you for what you've done for this community, but for what the moon has been to this community, not just to this community, but to the world, because there's people all over the place, when they come to Tallahassee, they think about the moon. So congratulations on this well-deserved proclamation, we look forward to you doing more amazing things in Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know y'all were just letting anybody in there. Nick Maddox was all up in there. I thought it was a classy place, you know? Huh?
Commissioner Proctor, you're...
You've been there, so. We won't call any names, actually. We are very excited. Some years ago, three years ago, we did Marcus Roberts did a live album there. And yeah, all of that, great things, great memories. We now want to invite Mr. Matt, if you would please come forward, Mr. McBride. And anyone coming with Mr. McBride?
Is that you?
That's me. Now, I want y'all to know that I've spent some time in front of the Top Flight, mostly at the nursery school across the street. Mr. Know's wash house was there, and Gaines Nursery was there. So I've been seen over in Osceola quite a bit as a young man. That's what I was doing. We're excited because some of Bishop's church members, I said they are duly membered. And you'll get that on the way home. Mr. Matt, we are honored to present this to you and your family. Whereas Mr. Theophilus Mac McBride was born January 15, 1947. Martin Luther King was born on January 15. Same day. But you in Crawfordville, Florida, located in Walco. And from a young age demonstrated a spirit and passion for community and culture. And in 1971, after marrying his beloved wife Martha McBride, the couple made their home in Tallahassee. In 1972, where Mr. McBride would lay the foundation for an institution that would become a cultural cornerstone in the community. And whereas in December 1974, Mr. McBride established the now iconic Top Flight Club formerly known as Jetway in Maddox, introducing a space that would serve not only as a social gathering place, but as a beacon of culture, resilience, and joy within the African-American community. And whereas for over five decades, the Top Flight, I said five decades, y'all, five decades, the Top Flight has stood as a symbol of enduring spirit, entertainment, and therapeutic joy, welcoming generations through its doors and offering a safe space for celebration, unity, and expression. And whereas beyond his public contributions, Mr. McBride is a devoted family man and loving husband, a proud father of three, grandfather of five, and great-grandfather of three, who finds joy in deep sea fishing, relaxing with classic television favorites such as Sanford and Son, the Andy Griffith Show, and Everybody Loves Raymond, and passionately cheering on his favorite teams, the Dallas Cowboys. Mr. Matt, this is a typo, isn't it? The Los Angeles Dodgers and the Golden State Warriors. Woo-woo. And whereas Mr. McBride is revered as a quiet man of wisdom, respected by all who know him for his sound advice, generous heart, and an impeccable sense of humor that brings joy to every room he enters. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County that we honor and celebrate the extraordinary legacy of Theophilus Mac McBride for his visionary leadership, cultural contributions, and unwavering commitment to the community through the creation and preservation of Top Flight Club. His life and work have left an indelible mark on the hearts of many in the history of Tallahassee dated this 13th day of May of 20 and 25. Mr. Matt, I present this proclamation to you. God bless you. Community, you all need to know that, I can't remember the year, but when Luther Vandross passed, I called Mr. Matt and said, Mr. Matt, community is hurting, and we need to have a get-together in memory of Luther Vandross. And Mr. Matt said, very well, go ahead. And he allowed for District One Commissioner to summons the District One community to come to the District One cultural spot. And we held a memorable evening in honor of Luther Vandross. Ooh, that one. And it was a great night, and much fun was had by all. But then reputationally, you all know that there are two things very, very shared by all who've had history with this establishment that people say, and the first is that them wings, them wings is to die for. And I can agree with that. And that second thing, I let y'all talk about that on the way home. Mr. Matt, once you have it.
Thank you very much for this platform. And you can tell I'm not a talker, I'm a worker. So thanks, everybody, for everything. And yes, he says, where the wings don't play.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'm telling myself that Catfish is pretty good, too. Probably might be better than Wings for me. So something about the young folks in their twenties and thirties, around 75 to 85, they were trying to figure out a way to party back then. And here 40, 50 years later, we're still enjoying the spoils of things that they saw to have created back then. Mac is not just a business on the South Side, but is a staple of the South Side. If you know anything about Top Flight, you know you had a good time there. Most of us, if not all of us, have spent some time there. So as it takes pictures to Mac, I want to let you know that I appreciate what you've been for our community and not just for the South Side, but all over our community. And we hope for many more years of Top Flight wings and Catfish to come. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Draper, will you join me at the podium? All right, commissioners, thank you. It is my pleasure to present a proclamation recognizing May 2025 as Bike Month. So whereas throughout the month of May, Leon County will celebrate the joys of riding bikes and the well-being it inspires within us. And whereas May 12th through 16th, 2025 is Bike to Work Week, and May 16th is Bike to Work Day. I expect to see all of your bicycles outside of the courthouse on those designated days, commissioners, especially you, Mr. County Administrator. I know you got a long hike there. Millions nationwide engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and a renewed form of quality family recreation. And whereas cycling organizations and independent cyclists throughout our community are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas Leon County's vast network of on-road and off-road trails supports the livelihoods of our citizens, improves quality of life, boosts local economies, and contributes to healthier, more connected neighborhoods. And whereas Visit Tallahassee is promoting bicycle use as a means of transportation and recreation to attract more visitors, to enjoy our local parks, trail systems, restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, cultural and scenic attractions, and cultural and scenic attractions in our beautiful community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners that the month of May 2025 be known as Bike Month in Leon County, and further urge all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and be more aware of cyclists on our streets and roadways dated this 13th day of May 2025. I'll just add, you know, I know that we do a really good job in Leon County of providing trails and space for our bicyclists in addition to really prioritizing bicycle safety and pedestrian safety. My predecessor, Commissioner Deloge, went a long way to making sure that we had a lot of trails for all of our bicycling community. So thank you, guys, for being here, and if you'd like to say a few words, go right ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. You actually said you do a very good job, a great job, Leon County does, and Blueprint and the city of Tallahassee in providing bicycle infrastructure. We really appreciate that. I'll just make a few points and then turn it over to Gabriella. And that is this, the restaurant that I like to go to, and if you look behind the restaurant, you see a bunch of bikes, those are the workers' bikes. And that's why having a Bike to Work Week is important because a lot of people like to work week as every week. And there are many of the people that support us in the community. You know, cars are expensive, and car insurance is expensive, and so many people don't have the option of having a car to get to work. So that's why we need to make sure that Tallahassee, Leon County is safe, not just for sport riders like us, but also for people that actually need to use a bicycle to get to work. We unfortunately continue to have fatalities and injuries in Tallahassee and Leon County, and we're committed to preventing that. Of course, part of that is the infrastructure that you invest in and also the enforcement and education. We really appreciate you for bringing this for the Bicycle Month. Thank you, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much, commissioners, for supporting safety in our community. I am an avid cyclist, but like Eric Draper, I am passionate about access. So many people who don't have the means to have a car rely on bicycles, and safety is the most important thing to our community. We really need to focus on reducing the fatalities and accidents that are happening with pedestrians and cyclists. So I do want to say thank you to the commissioners also for making Tallahassee such a wonderful place to live. They don't call it Trailahassie for nothing. Thank you so much, especially to Commissioner Welch. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Don't let him ride away before I give him his compliments. Thank you. I just want to thank you both for being such strong advocates and for your input, and I hope staying around for our comp plan transmittal update to make sure that we have mobility stuff in there that protects cyclists. Thank you both.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Minor. You guys stay right there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the both of you and the entire bicycling community here in Leon County. It's very active, it's very engaged. I've been taking a course with Smart Growth America that emphasizes complete streets, which is the holistic design of our transportation infrastructure to include not just roads for cars, but bike lanes for bicycles, sidewalks for pedestrians, people who use wheelchairs. So I mean, all of that is comprehensively a part of where we need to go. And Leon County and Tallahassee, I think, have done a good job of that, as well as the state of Florida embracing complete streets concepts. But it just emphasizes how important it is, and I can't thank the two of you and the community that you are here speaking on behalf of because that engagement is really critical to keep things moving in the right direction. So thank you for everything you do.
All right. Thank you all so much. All right, commissioners, we are now on to citizens to be heard on consent and non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no speakers under this section of the agenda.
All right, commissioners, we are now on the consent agenda. I would like to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move consent.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Minor and a second from Commissioner Maddox. Is there any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, consent passes unanimously. We are now on to general business. All right, we're cooking. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, agenda item number seven provides a status report on the county's progress implementing 41 recommendations from the 2024 after-action reports following the bicentennial storm, the tornado outbreak last May, as well as Hurricane Helene in September. The item also outlines the county's preparations for the upcoming 2025 Atlantic hurricane season. Commissioners, you know, we put an awful lot of emphasis on both our after-action reports as well as our preparations for the upcoming hurricane seasons. In a moment, commissioners, I will introduce Matt Cavell, who will provide, the board will have a brief presentation on the after-action report, followed by Kevin Peters, our emergency management director, who will share the latest on the forecast for the upcoming hurricane season. The item before you, commissioners, does not have a fiscal impact per se of the 41 recommendations in the 2024 after-action report. 39 have already been completed and implemented within existing departmental operational budgets. Everything from roadway safety signage to tailored social media and public awareness campaigns, to the development of GIS mapping tools and informational materials, and a lot more that you'll read about. However, there are two remaining recommendations that do have a fiscal impact as they relate to disaster pay and personnel policies. Those will come back for your consideration, commissioners, during our upcoming June 17th workshop. And with that, I'll hand it over to Matt Cavell.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioners, what I'm going to cover very briefly and then turn it over to Kevin for the upcoming forecast for the 2025 hurricane season is the county's ongoing commitment to exhaustive after-action reports and the implementation of those reports. As you may recall, over the 2024 year, you had seen three after-action reports for the storms the county administrator has enumerated for you. That brings us to six after-action reports since 2016. That means we've had also 11 federally declared disasters during that period, some of which necessitate an after-action review, some of which are all the remaining which have hot washes and terms for improvement. Out of all of those after-action reports in total, more than 330 findings and 253 recommendations have been implemented up until this point. Just to touch on a few of the implemented highlights from the past 2024 year, we had, as part of the bicentennial storm, identified the need, and it sounds remarkably simple on the surface, but it's an important public safety measure, is to put highly visible barricades along the roadways where there are deep ditches in neighborhoods experiencing flooding. This was important in the Chairs area because out of all of the water rescues during that activation, all of them were cars in ditches. Once we implemented those barricades around the areas that people would be accessing their homes, that number dropped to zero. That is a very important indicator of the things that local governments nationwide should be considering during flooding events, but also that will be baked into our process going forward as an after-action implementation. In addition, just some of the things were continued efforts for senior living homes or areas that kind of fall into the cracks of where the state has purview, but where the county can work with our local partners to ensure that we're pinging them for electricity, that we're organizing wellness checks, that we're very much on the tip of the spear of bringing them the necessary resources to recover. And then there's some digital behind-the-scenes upgrades. Again, it's all things big and small, and to the last bit for continued youth preparedness and engagement because it can really start with kids bringing it to families. Couple of the elements, the key high-level elements that we've put into place, too, also is communications improvements and enhancements. We're going to be conducting in-person trainings countywide in areas of high manufactured home density. Kevin and I just had the opportunity last week to speak on a live podcast in WFSU. And as we've heard for the beginning of this year, when we've already experienced two EF1 tornadoes and one EF0 tornado in 2025 alone, and a blizzard. Out of all of that, we've definitely underscored that people still need resources and education on the appropriate actions to take if they're in a manufactured and mobile home. In addition to that, to make sure that everyone has the resources that they need, this year we will be mailing directly to all residents in Leon County, 140,000 copies of disaster products. In addition to that, we are continuing to support sign-ups all across the platforms that we have, from social to text alert sign-ups to everything, to continue to support also emergency transportation assistance during hurricane evacuations. The state launches the process of taking folks from their homes to safe shelter. They do that at no cost for folks, to take them to and from, and that service is available during disaster. And again, we're committed to not only increasing all the information outlets that we have, but notifying folks of that important measures that they can seek safe shelter during an evacuation, because, as I've said dozens of times, but it never is wrong, no one's been communicated with too much during a disaster. The last element to touch on before I pass it over to Kevin Peters is a little bit about as we head into the hurricane season. I know that we've all seen headlines about FEMA and federal assistance and what that means for the community. I can say very much we are in lockstep with our state partners, who just recently, Kevin Guthrie, the FDM Director, had said that no, no work at the federal level will change how we respond to disasters. If there is uncertainty for anything in advance of the 2025 hurricane season, there is no uncertainty for how we will respond as a county government committed to the public safety and protecting lives and livelihoods during a disaster. So some mitigation monies have been suspended by the federal government. That is, does not jeopardize any of the projects that we're bringing forward. In addition, there's a review committee established to review FEMA and the guidelines in which they engage with federal monies. That is something we're going to watch incredibly closely as we do the upcoming hurricane season forecast, as we try to understand what new thresholds may be established for disasters upcoming and what that means. So again, monitoring and watching the evolution of the federal process is very, very important, but right now, nothing has changed for how we will respond. I want to turn it over to Kevin Peters at this time to give a snapshot for what we know of the upcoming 2025 hurricane season. Kevin?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We are 18 days from hurricane season 2025. Hurricane season begins June 1st and will run through November 30th. The peak of hurricane season is in September, right around September 10th. That's, that's the high point. Based on the way averages are calculated for meteorological records for the last 30 years from 1991 to 2020, is considered our period of average. An average hurricane season has 14 named storms. Seven of those become hurricanes, and three of those can become major hurricanes, which would be category three or higher. Before I move into the 2025 hurricane forecast, I just wanted to revisit the numbers from 2024 for a little, little bit of context. This time last year, I briefed out that Colorado State was forecasting 23 named storms, 11 hurricanes, and five of those to become majors. In 2024, the four, what we actually saw was 18 named storms, 11 hurricanes, five majors. So Colorado State had a very good forecast last year. Of course, we did see three very significant storms affect Florida, two in our, our region with Debbie that was a category one, Helene a category four, one of the most deadliest storms since Hurricane Katrina, and Hurricane Milton that made landfall in the Tampa Bay areas a category three. So now back to 2025 and what we can expect and what's going to influence our forecast. Right now, the El Nino, La Nina cycle, it's in what's called a neutral phase, so it's not strong one way or the other. It's kind of in the middle. Still a little bit towards a La Nina, though. We also have water temperatures in the Atlantic Ocean that are a little bit above normal. They're not as high as they were last hurricane season at this point, or before hurricane season last year at this point. But with those neutral conditions and warm waters in the oceans, we can expect a more active hurricane season than average. So now to the forecast. Colorado State for 2025 is calling for 17 named storms. Nine of those could become hurricanes. Four of those could become major hurricanes. Additionally, the Weather Channel, you know, a very major player in, in broadcast meteorology, they have issued a hurricane season forecast of 19 named storms, nine hurricanes, four of those could become major. So there's some consistency there with the number of hurricanes. And just, just recently, at the end of last week, the National Meteorological Service of the country of Mexico issued a forecast. They're anticipating 13 to 17 named storms, six to eight of those to become hurricanes, and three to four of those could become major hurricanes. So you see, we're all, everybody's just above that, that, that average, just slightly above average. And here for the United States, NOAA will issue their hurricane season official forecast next Thursday, May 22nd at 11:00 a.m. So what all this does now tell us is we can expect a busy hurricane season, but what it doesn't tell us is the when or the where these storms may develop. But preparedness is the key, the preparedness that, such as which we take where we've gone through our after-action reports and have found over 332 findings, 253 recommendations for improvement. That type of preparedness helped us weather the storms of 2024, and that type of preparedness all summer long will help us weather the storms of 2025. That completes the outlook portion, and I'll turn it back over to the Administrator.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Kevin. Commissioners, we're recommending option one. We have no speakers on this item, and Mr. Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, Commissioners? Move option one. We've got a motion.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Minor, we're in discussion. I had Commissioner Caban in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
I just want to give a brief thank you to staff on this item, particularly the uptick in communication with our neighbors in Leon County that reside in mobile homes and manufactured homes. This is very important to our district, and I'm very proud to see that we're going to be doing our community meetings and trainings and increase the communication procedure. So just thank you, and I'm proud to support this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. I've got Commissioner Maddox and then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quickly, how accurate were the reports, or the predicted estimated reports last year on the number of named storms?
Sorry. Yes, yes, sir. So with Colorado State, and they're the pioneers in seasonal hurricane forecasting, they're, they're considered the preeminent forecasters for seasonal outlooks. Last year, their, their named storm forecast was 23. Actually, we had 18, so they a little, little overforecast that, but they're close. But they forecast 11 hurricanes and five of those become majors. We actually saw 11 hurricanes last season, and five of those became majors. So they were very close.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just want to say, a lot of times we hear this stuff, we just think, you know, it's predictions and numbers and, you know, these people don't know what they're talking about, but the accuracy of that, you said 23, you have 18, and you're spot on the money when it comes to hurricanes and the number of serious hurricanes. I would say we're looking at a pretty busy season, and we all should take it seriously. So I would, I would implore people, as they get their, their guides and think about hurricane season, that they really take it seriously, get prepared for it. Because it looks like we have some inclement weather coming, coming at us that can be unpredictable at times, but at least we have estimations that are very accurate for us to look at. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Proctor, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Commissioners, I know that this is a serious topic, conversation, yet I just have such extraordinary confidence in our staff. And even though it's serious, it's sometimes deadly, but I think that Matt Kavanaugh, he is so adaptive, reflexive, and does excellent work in the formlessness of storm activities. And it's not the traditional check the blank, it's a standard blueprint manual. They write the manuals, they go. And if there's a team that you facing this dread, but if there's a team that you would ride out with, I think Matt and his communicating abilities of information being disfruited, and Ms. Peters, their staff and what they do is second to nobody, it's award-winning. So we feel good, team, that we have you and the poise with which you all always react. We appreciate that. To another point, I wanted to ask Ms. Peters, is it just mere propaganda that our Commissioners have been hearing, that from a federal standpoint, due to budgetary restrictions and that hurricane forecasting and planes that fly into the hurricane, monies have been cut so severely that your ability to discern, be told what's occurring, will be hampered? Could you really honestly tell us if in fact that's just propaganda, or will you all be limited, and thus our community, if you're limited, we all are limited in our expectations for the coming storm season?
Commissioners, I can't speak to the exact detail of what personnel are available at NOAA. I would have to defer that to another time to follow up. I do know that our local National Weather Service office is fully staffed. We've seen no staffing changes here. I'm not aware of any vacancies at the National Hurricane Center. I've checked their staffing list and all of the forecasters that have traditionally been in place. And the forecasters at the National Hurricane Center are second to none with tropical weather forecasting, so I can say that for sure. There are a lot of tools that are available that can, from the weather satellites we have, they can also make some data inferences with, without actually having aircraft in the storms. They're, they're improved over what they used to be. But I do understand, our understanding is that there will still be flights by both NOAA and the U.S. Air Force Reserve this hurricane season to collect the data that's needed to feed the, the models to provide accurate hurricane forecasts.
Very good. Well, I, I feel a lot better knowing that boots on the ground, we're able to have confidence. But certainly the information with which has been reported, that budget cuts and so forth, not only the needs of air traffic controllers, but the needs for meteorology have been, have been compromised. So appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin, thank you for everything that you do, and every, the whole team, the whole team is really incredible. And, you know, we've all heard this before, but you know, Leon County is the first hurricane strong community in the nation. And what that means is that we've got a team that's very resilient, that knows what they're doing, is very talented. None of us want a disaster to come to Leon County, but should one come here, we've got a team that is very highly capable in helping us prepare and then recover after, after the storm passes. So thank you for everything you do. As Commissioner Proctor said, I, I've also been very concerned about some of the, some of the, some of the proposed cuts, some of the declarations coming from, from Washington about what could be coming. There's been talk about reducing National Weather Service staff. There's been talk about eliminating the, the Hurricane Research Division, which is the group of people that actually fly into the hurricanes and help us predict the hurricane path and severity, as well as cuts to FEMA. $300 million proposed to be cut from Florida's hurricane resilience and flood mitigation efforts, which is a big deal. And then also, I know we've got some federal proposals again, that, that will, if implemented, will make it harder for communities to seek federal declaration of disasters, which prevents us from getting reimbursement from the federal government, should we have disaster recovery efforts that, that we're engaged in. Now Leon County has funding for that. We actually allocate quite a bit of that, and our reserves are, are, are stable and, and healthy. But if that disaster declaration threshold is raised, is raised, it's going to be harder for us to get that reimbursement and be able to be secure for the following storms that might come afterwards. And then finally, my understanding, Kevin, you can maybe confirm this, is that the National Florida Insurance Program is authorized only through September 30th of this year, which is basically only, it doesn't even cover for the entire hurricane season this year. Is that still correct?
Yes, what you said, through that, that expiration deadline, we've, like a lot of things at this point, we've not heard anything firm and official, but that, that's still in place.
So I hope that, I hope that the federal government will go ahead and extend that national flood insurance program through the end of November 2025, because that, that covers us, that covers our, our homesteads that, that, that have that type of flood insurance. Without that extension, insurance premiums might be higher, coverage gaps are higher. So these are things that affect us here in our community because of what's going on in DC. So what I, for anybody that, anybody that's listening, anybody that's really concerned about this, as I am, please contact your U.S. Senators, your congresspeople, and, and ask them to maintain the, the funding that we have in terms of disaster recovery for FEMA, as well as some of the things that they're talking about doing at the National Weather Service and Hurricane Research Division. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. And I'll just add, you know, thank you to Matt and Kevin and all of our staff, our public works staff, who worked so hard during our hurricanes. I think that Commissioner Proctor stated it well. We really have a lot of confidence in you all, and you clearly are pros at this. I think that the after-action reports are a reflection of just how considerate we are in Leon County. I thought of it like Tiger Woods, you know, Tiger Woods won the Masters in 1997 with a pretty good swing, and then continually throughout his career manipulated it and changed it to make it the best it could be at any given time. And that's what our staff does. And I think that's a testament to the mentality that we approach these natural disasters, for which we have been certainly tested. So thank you guys once again. Thank all of your staff on our behalf, if they're listening or in the room, thank you. We know you do a lot of work. We know it's long nights, stressful nights, stressful days. County Administrator, that applies to you as well. We appreciate everything that you do, and appreciate your report. Commissioner Cummings, did you want to get on that real quick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. I, I just want to also recognize that with you all's after-assessment reports, and those are great, and we've done it after every disaster, but one of the things that you all have done that I really like is you focused in on the vulnerable groups in our community whenever we have those disasters, those individuals that live in manufactured homes. Your after-action reports have also looked at our seniors, the senior housing complexes, and how to make them aware and, and more disaster ready as well. And I think it's important that we as a county recognize that there are some vulnerabilities in our communities that don't respond, or don't have the ability to respond to national natural disasters as other portions of our community. So I thank you for that, for that focus. I thank you for the fact that we are continuing to make sure that our community is disaster resilient, so to speak. I know the city and the county has been recognized nationally in that respect, but we are not just sitting down on our laurels. We are continuing to build, and we are continuing to make sure our county is the best that it can be in the face of disasters. So in that respect, Mr. County Administrator and all your staff, I certainly want to thank you all for your, your continuing, continuing desire to make sure that our community is safe and resilient in the face of, of these national, national disasters. And if we continue to do this, this assessment after each disaster, we can do nothing but continue to be better. So thank you all for all your hard work, all of your compassion and concern for making our community strong. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. All right, Commissioner Singo, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, show it passes unanimously, and thank you all once again. Mr. County Administrator, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, and just goes to show you, the, the timing of this one was completely unintentional in the order of it, but it's the contract award for the Amtrak station and visitor's center, which of course was impacted by the May 10th tornado event. Again, it just underscores how, how real all of this is. The item before you seeks your approval toward a contract for the building repair project to H a contracting corp in the amount of $2.16 million. Since the dam was a result of the tornado event, Commissioners, funding will be partially provided through insurance, insurance proceeds, with additional funding coming from the tourism fund reserves. There's a budget amendment that we're seeking your approval on. Commissioners, we're recommending options one and two. We have, I believe, let me just verify, we have no speakers on this item, Commissioners, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Commissioners, would anyone like to make a motion? I've got a motion for staff recommendation, options one and two, from Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Commissioner Cummings. We are in discussion. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, I would just say thank you to staff for putting together, making sure that our insurance will cover as much as possible and a lot of confidence that we'll get that repaired. Commissioner, County Administrator, was there a timeline on the construction repair? I may have missed it or probably just didn't look at it.
Timeline?
Yeah, I apologize. Nine months. Okay. Remarkable. Thank you guys so much. Commissioners, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Show it passes unanimously. Thank you, commissioners. Next item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number nine is the Domtion of Resolution approving the plan for financing for the Housing Finance Authority of Leon County. The resolution seeks your approval of a proposed financing plan to seek up to $50 million in single-family mortgage revenue bonds from the state of Florida. Should the HFA be successful in securing these revenue bonds, the FHA would convert those revenue bonds to finance eligible, affordable, multifamily rental developments in Leon County, which the county has been very, very successful in doing. And of course, this would just create additional opportunities for us to do so. We're happy to answer any question. We have speakers, well, representatives from HFA here, should the commissioners have questions. Other than that, we have no speakers. Mr. Chairman, again, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. We've got a motion for staff recommendation to adopt resolution by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. We are in discussion, commissioners. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Show it passes unanimously. Thank you, commissioners. We are on to general business. Item number 10, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks the board's full consideration to reappoint City Commissioner Porter to the Appalachian Regional Planning Council and the appointment of citizens to six seats on the county's Citizen Advisory Committee for Quality Growth. The item recommends options one through seven, of which are reappointments, with the exception of option four. Two eligible residents are seeking reappointment to serve on the Advisory Committee for Quality Growth. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we have no speakers on this item and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioners, can we get a motion on options one through seven, except for option four? Can we remove that and move those?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Maddox. We're removing, okay, you'll second it, Commissioner Cummings. Now, we're in discussion on items one, two, three, five, six, and seven, where we've moved number four out. We're going to discuss that next. Are you, do you have a discussion, do you have an item you want to discuss on one through? You're good with one through without four? No, we're good? Okay. All right. Seeing no discussion, oh, Commissioner Proctor, are you in the queue on this one or you want to wait till number four?
Mr. Chairman, I was attempting to, where are we on this item?
We are, we have a motion on staff recommendations, one, two, three, and five, six, seven. And then we have removed option number four for discussion next, which is where we have to pick one of two.
I just sort of wanted to garner a feel for, what is it that we anticipate? What is our expectation of Appalachian Regional Planning Council, as well as for the committee advising for quality growth? What is our expectation of this committee? What is its mission and why is it necessary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to respond. In terms of the Appalachian Regional Planning Council, commissioners, and you have a representative on that board, Commissioner Minor, you may recall, we've recently sort of restructured how we do that and we have assigned the Appalachian Regional Planning Council with specific tasks that are helpful. They do a lot of work throughout the region in the area of economic development and emergency management. And again, we've sort of reorganized the way that we do the Appalachian Regional Planning Council's contracts to assign them very specific tasks that they are well-suited to perform for us, and we're happy to answer more questions on that. With respect to the Advisor Committee on Quality Growth, commissioners, that's our user group, so to speak. We have, that's made up of representatives from industry stakeholders, contractors, building inspectors, architects, the like, as well as neighborhood representatives and others, where we run every proposed ordinance related to permitting and environmental management through them, seek their advice and guidance before coming to you. It's a very helpful group and it's one that's very active and provides a lot of value for us. So, with that, again, happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Commissioner Proctor?
So, when we say helpful, what is the jurisdiction in terms of geographic and what are the tangible contributions that this body makes to our community? Is it a regional concern, is it conservative?
Are you speaking to the Appalachian Regional Planning Council?
Right.
Yeah, well, first, the Appalachian Regional Planning Council. Again, and again, Commissioner Minor may want to weigh in here as well, but the Appalachian Regional Planning Council has been in place for a very long time. The structure allows each county within the, I think, the eight-county region to have representatives on the county and commissioners from all eight counties serve. It is, again, one which provides for technical support for all of these counties and coordination on areas that we have like interest on, again, in the area, specifically in the area of economic development, in the area of, in the area of economic development and emergency management. They're also used heavily in urban and regional planning with other counties. We don't use them as much for that because we have a very well-staffed, highly professional planning department. Other counties use them more for your traditional planning functions. Again, we tend to use them more for emergency management and for economic development in certain cases where they're particularly well-suited to help us.
Okay. I, you want to weigh in?
No, I'll go ahead.
I just want to say, Commissioner, I've just heard that over the years, Appalachian Regional Council, I think, I think I was appointed and once, and I think I could survive maybe two meetings and I didn't understand what it was for. And I just didn't have time because it was all over the place to me. I have looked for and hoped for collaboration between Leon County and something specific with Walcol. I have longed and hoped for something with Thomasville. I have hoped for something collaborative to do with Gaston County. And these, and I don't expect anything with Jefferson, I get that, but the other communities in which we have contiguous borders, but we've never collaborated. And we did have dinner, maybe twice, with Walcol County. We met with them a couple of times and talked about speculatively what, how do we, you know, we picked four topics and go through that. And I just don't know what counties we have had dinner with, be it Thomas County. We share cultural uniquenesses, weather patterns, that historic reference to many things common, but we never meet with these people, we never talk with these people. We're islands unto ourselves, as they are. And I'd like to, I can't remember what era that we talked about, regional reaching out. And I think Mayor Marx was coming in and that was a goal, about this regional chamber commerce. I mean, either we're talking about healthcare, but even with the healthcare conversation of FSU, or TMH rather, in Panama City. But that's not happening at the policy level of commissions to commissions. The growth, commissioners that you see in Walton County, the tourism occurring there on the Emerald Coast, we never have those conversations. And I'm pondering what hindereth us from these type of getting to no use or something. And so, when we talked about this council today, I was on it for about two meetings and I had to quit. But something different, I feel that with Thomasville, they just did something the other night up there with the roses. We did something with springtime Tallahassee, but they'll never cross the line and we don't invite them or nothing. And I have never gotten an invite to come up to Rose Parade and I like roses, right across the street. And that kind of isolation of which we live in, and with, like I said, with the exception of TMH talking to Panama City over hospital, is there not any collaborative potential in any area of life so common to each of the counties in this region? If so, I would just like to place before us at some point, maybe retreat. Item, what is our window of potential to further engage our neighbors? That's what I'm thinking.
Commissioner Cummings is in the queue and then Commissioner Minor, maybe you can answer some questions that they have. Okay, Commissioner, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Minor, go ahead and...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Proctor, those are good questions. Thank you for raising them. One thing, the Appalachian Regional Planning Council is the regional focus of nine counties. It doesn't cross the state line, so we don't, it doesn't include Thomasville, but for the nine counties in the Big Bend, we do a lot of coordination with each other. For a lot of the rural counties, basically all the counties aside from Leon, a lot of those county administrations don't have the type of robust planning staff and basically environmental staff that the ARPC provides. They've got staff that can do that, as well as helping them with grant writing, to get grants into those counties for various programs, you know, economic development, transportation, flood mitigation, environmental issues, all of that stuff. Now, with Leon County, we've got, you know, we're a mid-sized county that has those resources already. We work with them in different ways. And as the county administrator said just a few minutes ago, we just recently engaged with ARPC in a contract to provide emergency management services to supplement what Kevin Peters and his team are doing. So, we get, as someone who serves on that ARPC board, I can tell you, we get a lot of value out of it. The, probably the biggest value we get from that council, though, is the regional focus and the collaboration amongst the nine counties together. What I, if you have a chance, what I'd recommend is we can give you some of the materials that we've got, you know, brochures, marketing materials, as well as agendas that we've got from ARPC. Take a look at those. We would be happy to have you come to an ARPC meeting and they're conducted here in Tallahassee up on Caraway Road, and you're happy to come and talk with us about some of the things that you'd like to have us. We can talk with you about the things that we've been working on and see if that meshes with some of the things you're looking for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. All right. Commissioners, we've got staff, we've got a motion by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Cummings, for staff recommendations, one through seven, excluding option four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes unanimously. We are now on option four, which requires us to appoint a citizen from the list. So, I'm open to motions on that. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the appointment of Mr. Shannon Butler, if you'd like to fill that position.
All right. We've got a motion for Shannon Butler for option four by Commissioner Cummings, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And it passes unanimously. Thank you, commissioners. We are now on to item number, oh, snap. Excuse me, commissioners, a little high school creeping in on us there. All right. So, we are done with our general business agenda, commissioners. We will now move to, if y'all don't mind, commissioner time and that way we can start our hearing, public hearing at 6:00 on the nose. Items from the county attorney. I'm sorry, do we need to do citizens to be heard on non-agenda items? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On citizens to be heard on non-agenda items, we have two speakers. The first is Emily Mitchum.
Ms. Mitchum? Please state your name and address for the record.
Emily Mitchum, and my address is protected by Florida statute 741.465.
All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Emily Mitchum. I'm the executive director of Refuge House. We're the certified domestic and sexual services provider for Leon and seven surrounding counties. We've proudly served survivors in this community for over 45 years. Unfortunately, we've come to a place and time where Refuge House has experienced a steady and substantial increase in the number of domestic and sexual violence victims who are in need of emergency safe shelter. The lack of affordable housing has only added to the problem, preventing many victims from leaving their abuser simply because they cannot afford rent and other costs of living that have gone up so drastically over the past few years. With only about 23 emergency beds available in our current shelter, we're unable to house, unable to house all of those who are in need. Not only is our small emergency shelter operating at capacity, our transitional housing program is also consistently full. As a result, victims and their children are forced to remain in violent and potentially deadly situations or become homeless due to lack of housing, which leaves them vulnerable to further victimization. In addition to the rise in the numbers of those seeking help, the concerns and needs of victims have changed over the years. Traditionally, domestic violence services focused on a very quick stay in emergency shelter, case management to help with securing employment and housing, and perhaps in counseling. But today, we are finding that prolonged and intense violent attacks have caused severe rates of post-traumatic stress disorder in both adults and children, and we're experiencing a sharp increase in the number of children diagnosed with trauma-induced sensory processing disorders, post-traumatic stress disorder, autism, and ADHD. For that reason, Refuge House has been working to increase our capacity to meet the growing and changing needs of survivors. We know that the time for Refuge House to expand services in all our areas has come. Preparing to meet the growing needs, we began about two years ago to envision a new future in expansion of services. None of that would have been possible without our friends at Architects Lewis and Whitlock, who graciously donated their time and talent to designing a state-of-the-art transformative housing facility that will offer a new multi-generation approach for domestic violence, trauma healing, and crisis stabilization. We're proud to announce that we are embarking on a major initiative to create the Dawn of Hope Center at Refuge House. By converting and adding to an existing building on Refuge House-owned property, we will be able to more than double the amount of bed space immediately available to women, men, and children in need. The goal of this project is not only to provide safe shelter, but to offer comprehensive services that will heal childhood trauma, build resilience in children, and set mothers up for success upon departures. Survivors will have access to enhanced services that will decrease the risk of future victimizations designed by supporting their ability to gain economic self-sufficiency, heal from what is usually a lifelong history of violence, and gain support services for their children. This transformative program will break cycles of violence and poverty and assure improved long-term outcomes for survivors. We look forward to sharing our progress with you all as we embark on this effort. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchum.
The next speaker, Mike Nelson, and the final speaker on this section of the agenda.
Mr. Nelson, please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes once that little green light comes on.
Thank you. My name is Michael Nelson, 532 East Oakland Avenue.
Go ahead. You can start.
I was here, I obviously missed the pledge of allegiance, but I think that's a vital and important role in our oath to our office. So, I wanted to go ahead and read Florida statute 876.05, the public employee's oath. All persons who now or hereafter are employed by, or who now or hereafter are on the payroll of the state or any of its departments and agencies, subdivisions, counties, cities, school boards, and districts of the free public school system of the state or country, counties, or institutions of higher learning, accept candidates for federal office or required to take an oath before any... to take an oath before any person duly authorized to take acknowledgements of instruments for public record in the state, in the state in the following form. I, state your name, a citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States of America, and being employed by or an officer of, and a recipient of public funds as such employee or officer, do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida. Number two, said oath shall be filed with the records of the governing official or employing governmental agency prior to the approval of any voucher for payment of salary, expenses, or other compensation. Now, with that being said, there have been egregious breaches of public trust and violations of our constitutional rights, and especially my son's freedom of speech. Article 6, clause 2 is the supremacy clause, which stipulates the rights, that freedom of speech and our constitution has over the Florida statutes. So when Leon County Sheriff's Office charged my son with threats against Leon County High School, that was a scam to help get Rocky Hanna elected. He didn't do anything wrong. Our freedom of speech is first and foremost. And the way that investigation was handled is completely inept and shows the discrimination and the violations of the oath of office by all the school resource officers, Leon County Sheriff, Sheriff's deputies that were involved, and Rocky Hanna, the principal for Leon High School, and other people associated with this event. It is a violation of his federal rights, too. So we do really need to address the situation and the violation of his due process of freedom of speech.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. All right, we are now on items from the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing that I have for the board is just recognition of a longtime, 35-year county employee, Marsha Labatt, who joined Herb Teala, again, 35 years ago in the county attorney's office as the office administrator. She is retiring at the end of the month, and she didn't want a proclamation, she didn't want to appear before the board, but I do want to publicly recognize her for her many, many years of exemplary public service. Thank you.
Can we give her a round of applause? Ms. Labatt, if you're out there, I hope you heard that. Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, two things can be true at the same time, and I don't think two things might be true in this nature. She didn't want a proclamation, she didn't want to stand before the board. Okay? My guess is she didn't want to stand before the board, which probably wasn't my proclamation. Thirty-five years is a long time to be with anybody, and we appreciate the work she's done for Leon County. And so without her getting mad at me, I would like to, Mr. Chairman, ask for a proclamation for that young lady for her service and time in Leon County, but ask that we don't request her to come to the board. Maybe if you have a retirement party down in the county attorney's office, it can be presented to her there from our county attorney. As I do understand, and this is the best part of that 35 years that she spent with Leon County, there's a type of leader that wants to do all the work, but when it's time to be recognized, will rather just fade off until the sunset and live off the work that they've done and the legacy that they've left. And I appreciate those type of leaders because those are the type that you know are doing things sincerely from the heart. And so for 35 years, we've been blessed to have her, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't let this moment pass without recognizing her in the way that she wants to be recognized, which is privately amongst those that she's worked with, with a proclamation from the county. So I make that most...
I'll second.
I'll second that top secret proclamation.
All right, all right. We've got a motion and a couple of seconds to do a proclamation for Ms. Labatt in honor of her 35 years of service, even though she doesn't have to appear before us to take it, which is, I think, totally understandable. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Keefe, go ahead and...
I just want to add, and I'm sure you will, please convey, even though we usually love to promote the people up here, that this is, out of respect for her, we are not any less excited and grateful for her service in this proclamation.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Madam Attorney. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keeffe. Back to you.
That is all I have for the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, three very quick issues. First, I wanted to commend our EMS response to the FSU shootings on April 17th. Commissioners, you all may know, we've shared this information with you, but I thought it was appropriate to underscore it tonight. Their response to that event was really nothing short of heroic. We had 68 total EMS personnel respond, 26 were on duty, and 33 were off-duty who responded. We had 14 advanced life support ambulances, the first one of which was on scene within one minute of the first call. Commissioners, there's a lot to be said about their actions on that day. I'll say that the interoperability between FSU PD, TPD, LCSO, TFD, EMS, and the coordination, as well as the incident command, worked extraordinarily well during this event. I should also say, obviously, and this probably should have been said first, that to the victims, our EMS team transported six and assessed the two that didn't survive on scene. Again, it underscores the professionalism of our EMS department, as well as their year-round mass casualty training, which proved to be extraordinarily effective. Again, the unified command workshops that we conduct throughout the year. And finally, I just wanted to also commend our CDA, our Consolidated Dispatch, for their response during that event, which was really above and beyond, and again, to be commended. So I just wanted to mention that, commissioners. The other item that I wanted to just mention here tonight is I wanted to thank the board for your availability on our budget workshop for May 27th. Again, as you know, commissioners, we'll be discussing the solid waste and the fire service assessments at that time. The commission will have ample time to consider these issues fully, their impact on citizens, as well as the overall financial implications on the county moving forward. Again, we appreciate your availability, we look forward to that. And we will, on June 17th, at our June 17 workshop following that, of course, we'll be bringing to the board the much fuller implications of the budget. At that time, we will have the impacts of the legislative session, hopefully, as we all know, it's been extended to end no later than the end of June now. But at that time, we will certainly have our official June 1 revenue estimates and recommended departmental and constitutional budget requests. So commissioners, just thanks for your availability. But on that point, which factors so importantly into our budget discussion, on the legislative impact, I wanted to just ask Nikki Hatch to join us at the podium. I know it's an issue that the board has been paying very, very close attention to, and I wanted Nikki to just hit some of the highlights of where we are right now. Of course, we'll continue to track legislation that may impact the county throughout the session and the, including the end of session report. I know Nikki does a very good job of keeping us all very updated throughout legislative session through your Capitol updates, but with that, I'd like to just take a moment to ask Nikki to just sort of hit the highlights.
Sure. Commissioners, as Vince mentioned, this year's legislative session was supposed to end on May 2nd, but due to failed negotiations on the state budget and tax package, the legislature will be reconvening for an extended session through June. The extended session will be limited to the outstanding budgetary issues. So with that in mind, a number of bad bills proposed this year have effectively died, such as the FRS COLA reinstatement, the DEI restrictions, and county commission term limits, which only scratches the surface of the broad array of bills that we've been tracking this year. However, as you know, we fully anticipate most, if not all, of these bills to be proposed again next session. Most importantly, at this point, there are still many unknowns and big budgetary issues to be worked out in the coming weeks as the, as many differences remain between the two chambers, such as the Senate's proposed study for the elimination of property taxes versus the House, House, I'm sorry, House's property tax reforms being considered by its recently-appointed select committee, as well as the proposed redirect of tourist development taxes to provide property tax rebate to citizens, all of which would have significant budgetary impacts on county government statewide. But as Vince mentioned, we'll provide the latest information to you at the June budget workshop, as well as a full session recap at the end of session report to be presented in July.
Thank you, Nikki. Sure. Commissioner Maddox?
Of course, I've been following the session, all session. What happened with the CRE bill? I can't remember.
It died.
It died?
Yeah.
Okay. It passed in the House but not in the Senate?
Yeah, and they were very far apart. I believe the Senate version was the final version during the last week, but they couldn't reach an agreement on it. So it's dead.
Okay. I know that would have a huge impact, not just on CRAs in the city, but on us. I think those revenues, if, but I think the way it was structured now would be 20 years from now before it sunset, correct?
It could not be extended, and yes, CRAs would be limited to a 20-year span.
So if it was a current CRA, they say it got 10 years left, you couldn't, we couldn't...
You couldn't extend it.
Right, every ten.
As previously filed, you wouldn't have been able to extend it or amend any of the boundaries.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think that of all the things, there's so many things that they talked about this year that could be detrimental for us. I know Commissioner, I'm sorry, Senator Simon was pretty involved in that bill, correct?
I'm not sure.
I think he may have been, if anything, I know he was interested in it. I think we need to start thinking about in our ears what the future looks like for us being able to really help out those communities within our community that are blight, whether it be us doing special things in those communities or not. I feel well see, just by the look of it and from the conversations I've had with some of our legislators, that they seem to be disinterested in seeing CRAs continued. So if we haven't moved on that road, and this could be a totally premature comment, but if we haven't moved on that road, I think we all see the value of what in what CRAs do. And I think there's ways outside of us having CRAs that if they tend, if they do get sunset, they were able to create other mechanisms to help Frenchtown, Southside, and other areas of our communities that benefited from CRA. So that was one thing that really concerned me. I know we can only do as much as we can do, but that one right there, I can very well see really hurting, hurting some of our communities if you think about the neighborhood plans that the city have come up with for different neighborhoods within the CRA and what they're doing with those funds. If you think about it, I mean, we're years and years away, Commissioner Proctor, from your district, seeing the benefits that it may need from a CRA, and to not be able to renew those efforts, but have those funds sent back into the community where they need to be concentrated, would be something that would slow down the progress that we've made. So thank you for that update.
All right. Commissioner Proctor.
The Front Porch Initiative by Jeb Bush preceded the CRA, or was the CRA a predecessor to the Front Porch? Mr. Administrator, the first thing we got here was Bush wanted the Front Porch Initiative, and that started in Frenchtown, and somehow it morphed into CRA District. And then it all started in Frenchtown, then we wanted a uptown, you know, downtown, and we borrowed from the original blight of Frenchtown and poor communities and drug addiction and all those elements. And we probably started from District 1, urban core, and we, but the benefit of the most money has helped Gain Street in uptown area. So even though it used the vantage point of blight and dysfunction, disarray of communities urban, but beneficiaries, at least in our community, quantitatively have been non-urban communities. I was curious with respect to the DEI ideas of the state of Florida, has the DEI, is anti-posture? But did I read correctly that imposing the state's anti-DEI upon local government has not progressed or expanded any further? What is your take of the DEI and the state's attempt to impose it on local governance?
Sure. So there were a couple bills, the, we'll say the more popular one, Senate Bill 420, that stalled earlier on during session in committee, so it's effectively dead. And then in addition, there were other proposals, such as eliminating government contracting. We couldn't provide preference to minority businesses, but that also died.
Okay, thank you. Those two measures, the DEI not being imposed and forced upon local government, gives some regard still for our being a sovereign constitutional local governing entity and with home rule. And I was very glad that that measure died, graveyard dead, good. Secondly, I was pleased to see the conversation around the elimination of property taxes. Did I understand that that conversation has pretty much been muted?
No. Not at all.
It's still circulating?
No.
Give us a status of that, and how might we anticipate any possibility of it occurring?
So it's alive and well on both sides of the legislature. The Senate originally proposed in their tax package a study to be conducted to consider a framework for the elimination of property taxes. So that would have, we'll say, stalled until next year. Any potential constitutional amendments to go on the ballot wouldn't have been introduced until next year. However, more recently, the House has appointed a select committee to explore different variations of property tax reform, one being the consideration of elimination of property taxes, to imposing a $500,000 property tax exemption. So they'll be considering those ideas through the end of the year in preparation to come back with a proposal at the beginning of next session.
Commissioners, if this legislature places upon the, in front of Florida's voters, the elimination of property taxes from 0% to 1%, to 99%, every voter who owns property in Florida likely is going to support it. I think it's one of the most lethal proposals that would undercut local government, and it's still not clear to me, though we have a great staff and team, but offsetting or taking a big hit on property taxes, in particular a community where 52% of our property base is already off the road, and there is no language that calibrates a system of support for communities who say, well, more than 50% off the road, 40% or 30%. These will be the pro-rata balancing things to make sure. This is very dangerous, and I think that it's something which we really ought to, in this extended session, to place total focus on. this extended session, to place total focus on. To me, it's, it's, it's item number one. And I'm very, very pleased that the DEI thingy didn't carry. And as I had indicated earlier, session first began, that I wanted for our staff to begin to think of new ways to incorporate staff persons who are deemed to be working in that area of DEI and how to absorb them into different slots. So grateful we don't have to do that, but I would just say, this conversation is a dangerous one, and I think that we should do all that we can, and even to give a blanket support to our staff without specifically knowing what, they don't have to, just know that we don't want anything heading to the ballot that you're going to put in front of Florida voters, because they're going to definitely jump on a property elimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. And, and like the county administrator said, we'll have a, a more detailed report coming back to us in June, once they wrap up whatever decisions they're going to make. I agree with you, Commissioner Proctor, the property tax issue, as I said at the, at the town hall thing, you know, there's a lot of pressure from the top on us to reform, roll back rates and all these kinds of things. The legislature's budget has gone up year over year for like 50 years, and they hadn't rolled it back. So I think it's important that we do put a focus on it. I'm sure FAC and the League of Cities and all of the municipal advocacy organizations are really focusing on it. It's real, I mean, you know, you want to empty this building real quick and not be able to fix roads or provide services, that, that's, that's in the conversation. So, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner, county administrator, anything else?
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we're on to commissioner discussion. I would like us to, if we can, be done by 5:30 so that we can take our break and come back at 6 for our public hearings. So that gives us 39 minutes. And Commissioner Proctor, as we have been doing, we'll start with you.
Commissioner, thank you very much. This is a request for our motion that staff be given leeway for an appropriate response to Commissioner Voss and our loss of him, and that we're able to reflect our sentiments of sorrow and our respect for the 20-year service that he gave to us as a county commissioner. So move.
Second, Commissioner Proctor, I would ask that you, I don't know if this was asked, would you add a proclamation as well to that?
Hmm?
Because you, my second to that, when I was asking also, would you add a proclamation from the board?
Sure, and proclamation and other appropriate commendations to...
Yes, sir.
...reflect our concern and care.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Proctor and a second from Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Commissioners, I make motion for proclamation recognizing the life, the legacy, the work of Atner Marsland to reflect our respect and commendation for all that he has given to our community as president in WCP and other services.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Proctor and a second from the rest of the board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
And then finally, commissioners, the Hill Family Foundation and the, I wanted to get just a, if that we're able to receive a report of some type for the emancipation celebration this weekend.
Commissioner Proctor, what levels of support?
Is that a, a motion, Commissioner Proctor?
Oh, no, no, no. I was asking for any updates or any...
Oh, okay, I got you.
...information on, related to it for this weekend.
Matt's got it. I know we got an email.
And, and we're, we're off on Emancipation Day next Tuesday, the county will be closed.
May 20th, yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good.
Commissioners, so this Saturday from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM, the Henry Hill Foundation is operating for the 139th year, Mr. Williams was right on his numbers, the 139th year of the Emancipation Day Celebration held at the Henry Hill Park. The address right now is on Centerville Road, it's got some blanks on it, you got an email with more details. All commissioners have been invited to provide remarks at the start of that program at 1:00 PM at that location. Community Media Relations has been working with Mr. Williams and the Henry Hill Foundation members to promote the event. We're preparing a program for folks at the event to have as a keepsake and a reminder of this particular event, the 139th. And then in addition to that, we're having representation of the county's sponsorship and support at the event, in addition to logistics of LCSO deputies and all the stuff in the weeds that run a safe event. So, so that's what we're doing on Saturday. Everyone's invited to come on out to that, and if you need more details, look to that email, okay?
Thank you, Matt. Commissioner Proctor, did that answer your question?
And, and then finally, commissioners, community inviting you to a meetup, a gathering at Florida MU versus Mara at the Will Packer Amphitheater. Special little service, Bishop, Bishop Griffin will be saying empowering, empowering word in the morning from 9 to 10 at service. And then for persons concerned about the future of MU and the leadership issues of next president, there will be a gathering, a number of people who will be talking, including Mr. Will Packer himself. So if you've never been to a building in the name of the person who's, you know, like this one has Judge Akins, and you've never heard the namesake, but tomorrow, the namesake of Amphitheater will be there to share his thoughts and others. So we invite you to that event. Those things said, thank you so much, commissioners. Some, for some reason, I feel as if something is missing or something, but come to me possibly in a few minutes. Thank you.
Yes, sir, just let me know.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Miners out of the chamber, so we'll go to Commissioner O'Keefe, and then we can circle back to Commissioner Minor if he shows back up. Commissioner O'Keefe, go right ahead.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to ask about is whether it's county administrator or county attorney, is where do we stand on fixing the sidewalk or the roads around Washington Square or the item we asked for, and when can we expect that back on options to, to get with that?
Don't fight over it.
Sure, so you, you saw this back and forth. So a, as you can see here, and, and I'll be brief to conform with the chairman's timeline here, but yes, Commissioner O'Keefe, as you may recall, the board asked for a complete status report to come back as an agenda item. We're doing that. You'll see that in June, the county attorney's office, as well as our county staff, have been pursuing the restoration of the right-of-way and the sidewalk, as well as securing the site through several different avenues and utilizing all of them. And I'll, I'll defer to the county attorney's office relative to some of the legal issues. But I do have at least some preliminary good news is that the owner has shown some good signs, some movement in at least tentatively agreeing to the restoration of the right-of-way and properly securing the sites. We've articulated to, to them, the owner as well as their engineers, our specific requirements, timelines, as well as the, the legal remedies should non-compliance occur, and they have tentatively agreed to, to take on those requirements at the owner's expense. Of course, we're going to continue to follow through on that, and I'll defer to the county attorney on some of the legal issues that her office has been working on.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
So, as directed by the board, we've been exploring all options. One of the fundamental issues is our inability to remove the barriers from the county's right-of-way until the developer moves the fencing or other barrier to secure the site. That needs to move to private property, the developer's private property, before we can really do anything about the right-of-way, even to the curb. So that was what Vince mentioned about actively trying to work with the developer. That is the first step to anything that we could do, any work we could do, or that the city could do, and that is what we are currently focused on. If it does not seem like the developer is going to do that voluntarily, we will be bringing back options, including legal action, to try to compel the developer to discontinue the unauthorized use of the county's right-of-way. So we'll have more for you in June on that and anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because, well, Mr. Administrator, you said status report. I, we don't need to go and do another motion, but I, at least as I remember it, it would actually be an item where we'd have options. Okay, thank you. And then for the record, he said, yes, you are right, Commissioner O'Keefe. Put one point up for me. Thank you for that. I know we've heard a lot back since last meeting that people are really engaged and really want to see this fixed, and I think they appreciate us moving on it. The only thing I'd, I'd say is just to recognize that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and while I didn't get ahead of time to get a proclamation on it for the month, I do want to thank all of the service providers, treatment providers, and community groups that help people with mental health, which is so many of us, and I appreciate those people and professionals providing treatment, because for anyone suffering with mental health challenges or intrusive thoughts, you know, they're proving that treatment works and that lives can improve, and I really just want to thank you to all of our mental health providers, community groups, social services groups, everybody who really makes a big difference in our community. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask for a proclamation, Mr. Chair. Dr. Parker is commemorating the Tallahassee bus boycott on May the 23rd and has requested that we present a proclamation during the service, because the city is for, has prepared a proclamation as well. So I'd like to move that we have a proclamation at that time on the program, and if there's an available, available commissioner to present it, I'll be out of town. I'd love to present it, but I'll be out of town. But that's my motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Cummings, second by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Do we have a...
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I also, oh, just reiterate, Commissioner O'Keefe's recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month this month, I've got on my green because of that, Commissioner Proctor already indicated and had a motion pass for proclamation for Atner Marsland, was a local lawyer, attended law school at FSU, and, you know, passed last week. But I think it's important when we think about people that are suffering many insidious mental issues, we never know. So I see, I think it's important that we, from the top to the bottom, just make sure we're, we're kind to each other, because we, we don't know when we come in contact with people, what, what they're going through from a mental standpoint. The last thing I want to mention, Mr. Chair, is I want to thank staff for the item, we passed on the consent agenda, but they gave us a great report on homelessness and homeless women and girls in our community. I was very encouraged by that report, because it indicated that of the number of homeless people in our community, about 36, 37% are, are women and girls. And I think based on that percentage, I think that we as a community can, it's a workable number, in other words, and I think we, we as a community can work on having a 0% of women and girls that are homeless and living on the street. So having said that, what, what I would like to do, after also considering that the sheriff has submitted his proposed budget, which I know we'll have to address that, but one of the things that he has asked for in that budget is another host sheriff position, and we know those host sheriffs deal specifically with our homeless population. So I'd like, Mr. County Administrator, for an agenda item to come back where staff can look at the possibility, and it might have to do it in conjunction with the sheriff, that if that particular position, host position, it is funded, if there could be some consideration of a percentage of that position devoted specifically to women and girls, homeless individuals in our community, or maybe even the whole, the entire position, but I know it would probably take some input from the sheriff and from the sheriff's office. So that's basically my motion, Mr. County Administrator, is that something that could possibly be doable before we get a second?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, second from Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. You got that, Mr. Administrator? Okay, perfect.
And other than that, Mr. Chair, I think that's basically my comments, and then again, you know, kudos to, to county administrator and our, and our staff. I'll just share this, I was at the Senior Citizens Annual Silver Stars Luncheon last week, and I was sitting at a table with a gentleman and his wife that lived down 27th, and he indicated that he had met with staff from Leon County on the comprehensive plan, on the comp plan, and he was just, he was just very complimentary of the staff, and he said, I tell you what, Commissioner Cummings, those guys, he said, they are smart, they know their stuff, and I want you guys to know that, sitting there, I was very proud. You guys do good work, but I was just very proud to stick my chest out as a commissioner. And I said, we have some very, very qualified, intelligent individuals in every segment of the county. And of course, then I said, and I counted administrator, he has the ability to choose good people that make us look good. So I want you to know that, at that, that banquet last Thursday night, I felt good, because staff, you make us feel good. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My condolences to the Voss family on the passing of Commissioner Lee Voss. Also, my condolences to the Marsland family on the passing of Atner Marsland, who's a friend and confidant, he will be missed. Mr. Chair, I want to make a motion for a agenda item. I received, I received a letter from the Big Ben Minority Chamber asking for the county sponsorship of their annual Camp Trepe program. It says, it serves ninth through 12 graders to provide youth entrepreneurial skills and leadership qualities, utilization, community, usually utilizing community business leaders in support of Domi Station. Public speaking is something they work on idea, ideas and business plan development, business finances, everything involving creating a business and entrepreneurship. Mr. Chair, the funding will support computers for the, for each camper, meals for all the participants, registration fees for campers from low-income housing. They're asking for anywhere in the range of $7,500 to a $10,000 sponsorship. Mr. Chair, I, I know we've done this in the past, we're just asking for an agenda item to come back for our consideration.
That's fair.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had the opportunity to listen to a friend and mentor and kind of family member, Sean Pittman, speak at Word of South on his book and his, his thoughts on where we are politically during Word of South. Disaffected is a book that he's written that I've read, and I think it's a very good book and we recommend it to many. What I would like to ask for is a proclamation celebrating not just Disaffected, but also the Sean Pittman Show and other things that Mr. Pittman has done for our community.
That's fair.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to tell you we're on a great meeting, look forward to our public hearings at 6.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Command?
Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Hold on one second.
I did want to recognize the presence of State Representative Ashley Gannon, presence today, she came over today. I've had the opportunity, excuse me, how you doing? I've had the opportunity to really keep up what's going on in the state legislation. We should, we should be...
We should, we should be concerned, Commissioner Proctor, uh, talked about that property tax thing, and some of the, some of the statements that are being made over there, I was listening today, and, uh, Speaker of the House, as well as, uh, as, as Senate President have all have long talked about this session, about how local governments are spending frivolously. Uh, and I think we can dispute that every way, rich way, we want to, because I think we're one of the leanest, if not the leanest, um, county budget in the state of Florida. And so, uh, as they consider, continue to, to talk about these things, I ask that our lobbying team and Nikki, uh, present and let them know that Leon County, anything, anything done to our, our property taxes, uh, will put us in a very detrimental place, because we, we are in a position where, where else do we cut? Where else do we go as we look at, at trying to perform the services we do for our, for our friends and neighbors here in Leon County? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Command, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to briefly, uh, follow up and say that, let the record reflect that I voted in the affirmative on consent items, 1 through 5, and the status support, item number 6. And then I voted on that recommendation, uh, for option, general business, 7 through 10. I just wanted to clear that up, because my service was faulty-
Yes, sir.
-and a few times I got bumped off, and-
We got you.
And that's all I have. Great meeting, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is that all? Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, Commissioners, I just have a few things real quick. I've been in conversations with the, uh, Micasuki tribe of Florida, who you may or may not have heard, or may or may not have met with, I don't know, has established an embassy in Tallahassee. Um, they're trying to, uh, reestablish a presence in the capital city, and they came to me and, and as a history teacher, gave me a really cool history lesson on, uh, on the, the story of the Micasuki in this area, which we know, that's a, that's a name that we are familiar with. Um, and I would like to ask for, or I would like to ask a Commissioner to request a motion to have staff work with the, the tribe to identify some locations, uh, that they had mentioned for, uh, updated and new historical markers, um, if, if you wouldn't mind.
A second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Uh, motion is moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and you, you guys good with that? Okay. And then lastly, I would just like to ask for a proclamation request, uh, recognizing the Deer Lake softball team for winning their fourth consecutive district championship. Uh, great group of ladies, great group of coaches, and we're going to, I'm going to present that to them at their banquet next week, if that's okay with you guys. All right, moved by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, and then, just wanna thank our tourist development staff, uh, and Mr., I think Mr., um, uh, Carswell was involved in the Alison Krauss concert promotion that I know Commissioner O'Keefe and I attended, I guess it was last week or two weeks ago, can't remember, but it was awesome, awesome, awesome. So, uh, I just wanna thank everybody involved in that, and, uh, you know, what a beautiful night, the Adderley Amphitheater was just, just incredible. I mean, you talk about a postcard for, uh, Tallahassee tourism, it was awesome. So, uh, thank you, Commissioners. With that, um, we are through our agenda. We will reconvene at 6 o'clock for our scheduled public hearings, uh, so we are in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.